All right, for all our marathoners, we're going to start our final meeting of the evening. This is the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting at its regularly scheduled time on Monday, July 9th, just starting a wee bit late around nine o'clock. We're going to start off with a roll call. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Ammons?
Still here.
Brown?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Tazen?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Threw us for a loop there. Calling an order by chair or by word and not by last name. All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes of our previous Committee of the Whole meeting from the June 25th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I will motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Dean and a second by Dennis Roberts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and that is approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Nope, thanks for coming. Public input, I didn't get any cards, so we're going to move right along to presentations. I don't see any. All right, staff reports? Nope, thanks for talking, folks.
My kind of guy.
And now we're on to ordinance number 2018-06-047, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 23, operation and parking of dockless bicycles on city of Urbana rights of way and property, coming from Kevin Garcia. Welcome back.
Yes, hello again. Okay, so the ordinance before you would codify the bike share regulations that were agreed upon in the intergovernmental agreement that was approved a few weeks ago by council resolution. It also adds parking regulations, which includes fines for companies that fail to remove improperly parked bikes in the required timeframe. So to that point, the fines would be $100 for each offense, which we feel would provide a strong incentive for companies to comply with the removal requirements. We don't really want our Public Works or Police to be in the bike removal business. That should be up to the companies, so the fines would be there as a strong incentive to make sure that the companies themselves are the ones that are removing the bikes. To the parking regulations themselves, there are really two key pieces there. One covers private property, one covers public property. For private property, the ordinance essentially says you can park on private property if you have the owner's consent or the tenant's consent. It also allows for property owners to designate specific parking areas for dockless bike share bikes on their property. In addition, there is language in the ordinance that covers the removal of bikes from private property, and basically, it says that a property owner can call a company to have it removed or move it to a proper space in the public right-of-way. Now, for public property, the ordinance would allow the city engineer to designate where parking is allowed. This would really give flexibility to respond to any parking issues quickly, if and when they would arise. So to that end, we have had multiple staff discussions with Public Works, planning and finance. Initially, our plan would be to allow parking in two areas. The first would be on sidewalks, leaving at least four feet of space for people to pass by, and that would essentially cover the downtown area. That's the only area, really, that has sidewalks wide enough for people to be able to meet that. And then, the second place would be anywhere where cars can park for free. So that would cover most neighborhoods, but it would also keep bikes from parking in metered spaces or in permitted spaces on the street. That last discussion, for the last minute or so, was just, it's not actually in the ordinance, but I just wanted to give council, or, sorry, committee, yes, committee, an idea of where our staff discussions were at. And then, in practice, we would take the parking information, we'd share it with companies, and also put it up on our website and develop some graphics that we could pass out to business owners, to folks, just like a one-page sheet that says, here's where you can park. And then, the bike share companies would also disseminate that information to the bike share users. That really concludes my report, but I can take questions on the ordinance if you have them.
Questions from council for Kevin. Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, okay, so it wasn't really clear how a private property owner would tell a potential bike shared rider where on his property it's possible to park. You know, so like, maybe it's possible to put them, what, in the parkway? You can just drop a bike off anywhere on the parkway and you're fine? But if it's your private property, what, do you have to post a sign saying, "No bikes in my lawn"?
No, if there's, so if a property owner does nothing, and I think there is language in here, I can find it, but essentially, it says that if a private property owner does not designate an area, then it is assumed that they are prohibited. So no action will be to prohibit parking on private property.
Great, but they could drop it off in your parkway and it wouldn't matter?
Well, like a parkway in front of somebody's house?
Yeah, like my house.
Well, yeah, so the discussions that I mentioned with Public Works and with Finance, I don't think people want to see dockless bikes in the grass, in the parkway. A lot of people invest time to landscape the areas in front of their houses, even if it is technically public right-of-way, so we don't want to see bikes being parked there. They'd probably just fall over anyway and just become an eyesore. So, the best solution seems to be having the bikes, bikes, park in the street, just where a car would be allowed to park.
Oh, like a parking spot?
Correct.
That's weird, okay.
Mary Alice?
So I have several questions, so I will just do some and then let other people ask some. So, let's jump off for Dennis. So Dennis, it's Section 23, 308, it's number D, which talks about the not needing to put a sign. So, a couple of things. The first thing is, is that if you, right now, there's two things. If a bike is found on your property, so let's say somebody decides to park a bike in my driveway, leave it in my driveway, I have two options. My first option is I can park it in any Urbana property where dockless bike parking is permitted, number one. My second option is that the private property owner shall have the right to dispose of any dockless bike improperly parked on the owner's property if, after giving notice to the bike company and the passage of the applicable time limits. So this says that if you have a bike in your driveway, you can only move it off of your property if you don't have anything that is close by. Let's say you have permit parking in front of your house. I have permit parking in front of my house. I cannot move it for up to three hours if it's between eight and six, Monday through Thursday, the different hours on the weekends, right? 12 hours if it is during the off-peak hour. So, I'm not allowed to move it onto the street because it's permit parking, and I'm not allowed to remove it from my driveway. My question to the lawyer is, if somebody parks their car in my driveway, what are my rights?
You can have it towed.
Immediately?
Yes.
Even if it's a rental car?
Even if it's a rental, whether it's a rental car or not doesn't matter, you can have it towed.
So I don't have that right with the way the language is?
At least, when I had it originally drafted, this section, I provided, and apparently, this was changed since my hands were on this, that a homeowner could remove the bike in any fashion he or she wants, including total disposal of the bike. But, there was, as I recall, some resistance from one or two council members, as well as others.
Okay, so I know that...
Mary Alice? May I just suggest that I think we have other thoughts just on that one before we go on to the next?
That is what I was...
Bill Brown?
I understood it to mean you can't dispose of it until after that time, but there's nothing preventing you from picking it up and moving it out of your way, putting it on the parkway. You can leave it on your property, not in your driveway, someplace where it's not in the way, and until the bike company comes and gets it, and then if they don't come and get it, you can dispose of it. Is that how you would interpret that?
As currently drafted, I would agree absolutely. As originally drafted, one would not have to notify the bike company or wait for the bike company to respond or not.
Bill, do you have more? Mary Alice, do you want to continue, or Dean has a thought?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused, because if somebody leaves anything on my property, as far as I know, I can dispose of it, whether it be a jacket, or a bike, or a car, or a gun, or a body, you can dispose of it, because, okay, the body part, no, but why are we tied in on this to having to call the company and wait, and then if they don't show up, we can dispose of it? And then, how do we prove we called the company? It just seems like something's built into here that isn't exactly consistent with common law with other things, I guess. I mean, you can dispose of anything on your property, right?
Sounds like a question to you, Kevin.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the answer to...
I'm just making a statement in general, and I'll ask our lawyer. I'll get rid of the body part.
Yes, you'd have to report the body, at least to the medical examiner or the coroner. In any event, if somebody leaves something on your property, I mean, if you are inclined to just dispose of it rather than making an effort to contact the owner, you can do that.
So is this suggesting that there's some criminal or civil penalty if you do remove it and dispose of it?
I don't believe the penalty. I'd have to look at it, but it may be a general penalty structure. It's been a while since I've looked at the penalty. If you hold on?
Sure, I guess I don't want to...
Section 23-310 says, "For any bike company's violation of this article," which is the ordinance. It's not a homeowner's violation.
Okay, so the homeowner is not going to be penalized criminally or civilly for...
Not as drafted, currently drafted.
All right.
Mary Alice, do you want to continue your thoughts?
I'll let Eric.
Eric, do you have any thought on this subject?
I'm just thinking, again, with the disclaimer that I'm not an attorney, I'm thinking that the person who rented the bike and then left it on private property and the owner disposed of it, it would really be the person who rented the bike who would be accountable to the bike company, I guess, for the value of the bike.
For violating an ordinance, yes.
Mary Alice?
So, I understand the intent, which is, you know, and I think that, for the most part, whenever somebody leaves a jacket, I mean, people on WUNA will post, "Hey, there's a child jacket in my yard, you know, if it belongs to you, please come get it." And I would hope that people would call the company or, you know, send out a notice that says, "Hey, come and get this." I don't like the language that they have the right to dispose. I would rather have language that is similar to how we treat any other property that is found on our, any other property that doesn't belong to us, found in our yard. That said, I think it's just good practice and it's good to advertise, you know, it would be great if this happens, you know, these are the processes, these are the steps that you can do to get this done very quickly. So that's, I just, I think I won't beat that horse to death. My other questions are this, so right now, I find it interesting that one of the ideas in terms of parking it in a parking space. So are private parties allowed to park their bikes in a parking space that isn't for pay right now? My bike, can I go park my bike without it getting removed by the city?
Well, I think somebody else would probably remove it for you, but I think you could...
Stolen.
Well, I could put a U-Lock on it, or what have you, I mean, I could lock it up, right? Is it allowed, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That might be a Public Works-y question, but...
I mean, it would seem to me that we would allow bikes to be parked where we currently allow bikes to be parked. I mean, that just, or if we want to expand that. I mean, why, I mean, I understand that we want to have designated spots, but we have designated spots for bike parking. Maybe it's not enough bike parking, but I think that would make sense to me. I have two more questions, but I'm going to let other people have questions.
Eric, did you have a thought on that?
Well, I'm just trying to think of how, I have two thoughts, which are not legalistic, but just almost common sense. One is that maybe it makes sense for bicycles to be able to park where motorcycles would park. But, on the other hand, bicycles are very easy to pick up and move, so if I, I can very well imagine a motorist who would find a rental bike parked in a parking space that was taking up the parking space that a car would take, and might, I think, very likely the motorist would pick the bike up, move it out of the parking space, and park his car there. But, I don't know, I think there's going to be some trial and error in this.
Bill?
Yeah, I like the idea of letting bikes park in parking spaces that aren't for pay. I sent this article from the ILEO to some council members, I don't know if they got it, because I think we have a pretty good spam filter that tends to eliminate a lot of stuff from our email, but it was from 1978, and at that time, they counted 18,000 bikes on campus in 1976. Now there's about 5,000, I guess. So there were more than three times as many bikes on campus at one point. There's a picture of, I remember going up Wright Street, bumper to bumper practically on your bike on your way to class, that was before we had a good bus system. So there, at least in the older buildings, actually, when you look, there's lots of bike parking. At the building where I work, VetMed, there's about 200 bike parking spots, and maybe 20, 25 of them are usually used. But the newer buildings, they didn't put in that much bike parking. So, if we need more bike parking for the dockless bikes, you still need to preserve what's there, because in a lot of these newer buildings, there's only a dozen spaces for bikes, and they're often taken up. So, we do need expanded space for more bicycles in some areas. And I think most cyclists would, if there's a lot of available parking, like at some of the older buildings, they're going to park there. I mean, that's by habit. But being able to use unutilized spaces where there's cars, where cars could park but aren't parked, makes a lot of sense. And actually, even some of the fast food restaurants that seem to have too much parking, you know, Burger King or something, it might be a good idea for them to designate a couple of their car parking spots as dockless bike share spots. It'll be interesting, I think, I think I commented to somebody, it'd be like, how we plan now to, at least on campus, where to put in sidewalks is to look and see where the trails in the grass appear. I think that'll kind of happen with the dockless bike shares, where bikes tend to start accumulating, people will start thinking creatively of, you know, where they could designate appropriate bike parking for that. So, I think the ordinance is good as written. I don't see really anything more to improve on. I like the suggestions about the parking areas. But, yeah, that's my only thoughts on that right now.
Dennis?
So I want to go to your explanation about downtown and dropping off the bike on the downtown sidewalk. Has anybody talked to the owner of the cinema gallery about this? Because this is an ongoing issue for some of the store owners who do not really enjoy people driving their bikes on the city sidewalk. And then, I'm not really sure that random leaving of the bike on the sidewalk is going to be a popular motion for many store owners and retailers along Main Street. Now, there are some bike parking slots here and there. Sometimes they're on the street, and sometimes they're, you know, like in the garage. Have you thought that out carefully? Or maybe it needs yet to be thought out carefully by Public Works, I'm just saying. You're going to get feedback.
Yeah, specifically the cinema gallery? No, we haven't discussed that. And, yeah, I know the sidewalks downtown, they do vary in width, so there might be some that, you know, that might be more parkable than others. I think most of the sidewalks downtown, the space to meet, you know, to meet the rule that we're talking about, which is to leave the four feet of space, I think a lot of that means you'd have to park a bike right next to an existing bike rack, because that's how most of the sidewalks are. But, there are, yeah, there are instances where the sidewalk might be wider that we could certainly look at.
Well, of course, you know, I think my concern is about, you know, three and a half blocks of the, you know, most crucial part of the downtown. And once you get, you know, past Wright Street, you know, along Springfield or whatever, there's more room for bike parking, but it's not, you know, right downtown bike parking, but it's, you know, on the edge of downtown, and anybody with legs can walk, you know, a block and a half to the restaurant. So it's going to be really interesting to see how people are working with that. And, you really will need to inform the shop owners along, you know, two or three blocks of Main Street, especially West Main Street, about these possible bike drop-offs, you know, anywhere along the street, if that's what you're allowing. And I really suggest that, yeah, you put in some more bike racks, so there are designated places on Main Street and not just, because there's also landscaping. You know, you don't want the bikes to be leaning up against, you know, flowerpots that were being planted by the city for the beautification. I'm just saying, that's one of my concerns for the downtown.
Mary Alice, do you have more?
I have two left.
All right.
All right. First, I want to say that I think this is a really cool idea. I know that I'm really hammering the details here, and I really could have used one today to get here by 5:30 from campus, so that would have been awesome, rather than having to walk home and getting my bike. So, the two final questions that I have are more legal questions. The first one is, is there a minimum amount in the security deposit that has to be kept at all times?
We always have the right to ask them to replenish their security deposit. If it's not replenished, we can go after them. If it's not replenished by the time the license is to be renewed, then we would advise the lead agency, which will probably be Champaign, that they have not replenished, and then the lead agency will deny them a license renewal. So there are several mechanisms to make sure. Some of this, as was indicated with the parking, some of this is trial and error. The $1,000 per company may not be enough, or may be sufficient, you know? We may be back to in a few months. Obviously, one of the things that's going to happen with this ordinance is it's also, assuming you pass it, it's probably going to be a precursor to the motor scooters that are coming next.
So, I was looking at a couple of examples of one, people that have, cities that have currently adopted policies. So Chicago just adopted one, Boulder, Colorado just adopted one. Chicago's already making some changes, and I think that they've only been doing it for a couple of months. So my question is, if we decide that $1,000 is not enough for the security deposit, say we figure on average it needs to be 2,500 because we have X number, are we allowed to change it before the renewal period?
Yes, you can always amend any ordinance at any time.
So we can amend it at any time, it's not, they don't get a contract that says, "These are the rules until June 30th"?
The university will have contracts with the bike companies for their property. We will not have contracts. That's why we're going the ordinance route.
Okay, all right, good. And my last question is, I just, based on my reading, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading it correctly, I read a whole bunch of items about suspension coming up for, to, I think, the city of engineer, and then it goes to the appeals process with the mayor and so forth. If the city goes through all those steps, and the decision, the final decision is made to suspend that particular bike provider, is it, can that be suspended outright, or do you have to have, between the University of Illinois and the city of Champaign, do they also have to agree? So my question is, if we say we're going to suspend, does the city of Champaign, then, are they required to suspend it for all three entities?
According to the intergovernmental agreement, we actually do not do the suspension. We find, what the finding would be, is that the license should be suspended or revoked, and then that is sent on to the lead agency of Champaign, and then they, under the intergovernmental agreement, are obligated across the board to suspend the license. It isn't just for Urbana.
So if we recommend suspension, we don't suspend? So if we recommend suspension, they have to, according to our intergovernmental agreement?
According to the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, all right, good.
Kevin, I just had one other thought on parking. I'm assuming, that we're assuming, that the fines for not picking up bikes is going to be the incentive by which these companies will form some means to communicate to their users where parking is and is not allowed, because so often, that detail may be something that just falls to the wayside, where they're like, "Ooh, we have these things, and they're great," and then they just leave them everywhere, because nobody reads what they can and cannot do with those bikes. Am I correct in our assumption on that?
Well...
Because it doesn't seem like we have specific language suggesting or saying that if you are negligent in communicating, you know, these restrictions to users, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I think the companies are generally, it seems like they provide that information even without prompting, but I thought we had language in here that required the companies to provide parking information to their users. But again, not everybody reads the, you know, reads everything when they install an app on their phone, they might just pass right over it. And I think the companies are getting maybe more clever in finding people who are not parking properly and gently nudging them into compliance. But, the fine would provide an additional, I think, incentive for the companies to remove the bikes on time, and then maybe in turn, get people to comply better.
Jim?
I believe, unless I'm thinking to a prior draft of the IGA, that the companies are to include in their app for renting these bikes, parking. If you look at Section 23-302, the lead agency is to provide, basically, the day-to-day regulation of this and management of this program. So by regulation, if it's Champaign, their regulation would provide that the companies must include parking information on their apps.
Okay, I'm just curious, because it's also probably three, well, one contract and two separate agreements are ordinances. You know, I think Champaign's just doing a pilot, they're not actually passing an ordinance like we are. But depending on where you are in town, the rules may be different. And if I was a college student, and somebody tried to tell me, "These are the rules that you have to abide by when parking this bike," I would just be like, "Whatever," and I would just do whatever I wanted with it anyway.
So, to that point, our proposed parking areas pretty closely mirror Champaign's, if not verbatim, pretty close. They're talking about the four foot of sidewalk clearance, and then parking in the street in free parking spaces. Although in Champaign, they already have, in their city code, it says bikes can park in the street, which seems kind of odd, but it's there.
Bill, did you have a thought?
Yeah, there is, under each bike company shell, one of them is informed through an application accessible from a smartphone, phone users, the proper orientation, operation of its bikes, parking and all that. So it does say that they're supposed to inform them through an app. And I know some of these companies also have a point system, so if you improperly park your bike, you're docked some points and, you know, lose some frequent flyer miles, that sort of thing. So I'd move ordinance, to send ordinance number 2018-06-047 to City Council with recommendation for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All right, that's a motion from Bill Brown, a second from Aaron Ammons. Is there any further discussion on the dockless bikes? Mary Ellis, woo.
I have a question. Am I allowed to amend the language in terms of private parking for this particular motion, or does that have to wait until we go to council?
I think the motion has already been made and seconded.
But you can make amendments, right?
Yes. You can. You can move-
You can make a motion for an amendment.
Right, you can move to amend. That will require a second, you will vote on the amendment first, and then if it passes, it's included, and then you vote on the amended ordinance.
Would you like to make a motion to amend?
I would. I would like to amend Section 23-308, letter D. I would like to add language that a private property owner shall have the right, have the same rights given to them with any property found on their property. Too many words with "property." Basically, my intention is, is they should have the same rights as finding any other property, what they can do with it. In terms of disposal, I'm fine with that, but they should be able to move it, put it somewhere else, just like they should be able to move a jacket or anything else.
Jim?
I just want to clarify that. I realize that this, and I agree with Bill, this specifies in terms of disposal, but I would like to add that information in here.
Are you suggesting that the disposal part be kept, and that kind of an intermediate step, that a property owner has the right to remove the bike?
Yes. It's a compromise. See if Bill will go with me here.
Well, you need a second to your amendment, if it's clear enough to council.
I believe it's already in there.
Is it?
It says that, in the event a private property owner elects not to allow parking, well, it would have to be, that might have to be changed, but it goes on to say, in a place other than that which has been designated for parking a dockless bikes, presumably, if there's no designation, the owner shall have the right to relocate the dockless bike to any part of Urbana's property where dockless bike parking is permitted. In other words, you can't move a dockless bike that's on your property to Dennis's property.
Can I move, but I can't, this also says that I can't move a dockless bike to in front of my house because it's permit parking.
Well-
There's nothing in here about permit parking.
I agree, there's nothing in here about permit parking.
Doesn't say you can dispose of it, it says you can move it.
I just want to be able to remove it from my property without any stipulations.
Where are you going to put it?
So, just to clarify, the-
I'm not going to put it in Dennis's yard, I promise.
The discussion about not being allowed to park in a permit parking space, that was just at the staff level. So that's something we were considering for the regulations of where you can park. So there was the sidewalk, you can park on a sidewalk with four feet of clearance, and then we were discussing, you can park anywhere where a car can park for free, since you need to pay for a permit, then it would exclude parking in a permit space. But that's not anywhere in the ordinance. That was just something we were discussing for the actual parking rules. So that wouldn't be codified in the ordinance.
Jim?
I do think the ordinance, as it's currently written, covers exactly what you're asking. You can't, a property owner, if the dockless bike is parked in an area not designated for parking, and if the default is, is if a, not a homeowner, any property owner, including a business, does not designate an area on their property, it means the dockless bike cannot be parked anywhere on their property. It's a default. In which case, if it's found on their property, business or residential, the bike can be relocated to, it's labeled here, Urbana property, which would allow the parking of a bike. In other words, you can't remove it and put it in another place where dockless bikes are not permitted.
But it could go to the right-of-way, in front of your house, for example.
If that's allowed, I don't, I don't think right-of-way are addressed in this ordinance, but if the city engineer designates Parkway, which my guess is he probably wouldn't, but if he designated Parkway, then it could be removed to Parkway. If Parkway's not designated as a place to park a dockless bike, no, the bike can't be removed to the Parkway, because that's not designated for parking.
So, at the end of the day, that, nobody's going to know where the bike was parked, right? Somebody puts a bike in your driveway, pick it up, put it on the sidewalk, nobody's going to say, oh, the homeowner picked it up and put it on the sidewalk, so they can't really track you down, right? I mean, that's logic, to me, would put a bike on the sidewalk, or put it right in front of the house in terms of the street. I mean, that's where I would pick it up if it was in my way. But, that said, I mean, maybe this is beating a dead horse, nobody can track down exactly who did that. So the city can't hold responsible the homeowner for doing that.
The city can't hold the homeowner responsible under the ordinance anyway, because-
Exactly, that's what I mean.
There's no fine provisions for homeowners, only the bike company. The bike companies are responsible for the use and the location of their bikes. If they find, and they can track who's using their bikes, because they use credit cards. If they find a user who is a parking, creating a parking problem, they could presumably suspend that user's privilege or right to use one of their bikes. Now, that doesn't mean they won't go on to, the user won't go to another company, but sooner or later, if that's a problem user, they will be weeded out, presumably.
All right, I'll withdraw my amendment.
All right, well, then we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor of passing this ordinance as, yes, all, we're not passing it, we're moving it. All those in favor of moving this forward to council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That was Dean, by the way. He's opposed, in case you didn't catch that K. And, all right, the ayes have it. Moving on, to ordinance number 2018-07-049, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 20, Articles 2 and 5, from Public Works, Brad Bennett.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to start by thanking the legal division for all their help in putting this together. What you've got before you is a result of the state legislature in April 2018 adopting Public Act 100-585, which regarded the placement of small cell technology in public right-of-way. That became effective on June 1st, 2018, and as part of that act, we had, municipalities have till August 1st, 2018, to amend, revise, and update their schedule of fees and right-of-way ordinances to reflect the items that were adopted by the state legislature. So I'm here before you this evening, bringing forward a fairly thick document that involves the revisions that we have to make to Chapter 20, as well as some new fees that we have to adopt to our schedule fee pertaining to this smart cell technology. The packet that you have or received this evening included some revisions under Section 7 on page A23. It had to do with make-work-ready orders, which I won't bore you with the details of those. And additionally, on page A25, under Section 12, I believe, there was a self-insurance requirement, or paragraph that we added. Both of those are part of the state mandated changes. I apologize for missing them in the earlier version that was included with your packet. But I'll kind of go through here, just really briefly, what some of the changes were. But before I do that, I do want to point out that there is a Illinois homeroom, or, not homeroom, home rule preemption requirement. So I mean, even though we are a home rule community, we have to adopt the state mandated changes. We really don't, unfortunately, have any choice in the matter. But just to go through real quickly, some of the changes, you notice in the document, we had to pull out everything that was in the existing ordinance that pertained to small cell technology, so those are all the strike-through items you see. And then you'll see where, in the underlined items, where we added all the state mandated items. So, just go through the changes real quick. In our previous ordinance, we limited installations to occur on existing poles and right-of-way. In the new state ordinance, we can propose an alternative co-location and placement on an existing pole or wireless support structure within 100 feet of the proposed pole that they want to use. And then the utility company, you know, has to certify that that won't work, and that they need their pole in the location if they're not going to use the recommended alternative by us. In our previous ordinance, we limited location to arterial streets, that was stricken in the state, we can't limit it to any classification of streets. In our previous ordinance, we limited the height of the pole to 30 feet, and the maximum diameter of the pole to 12 inches. The height of the tenon couldn't exceed seven foot above the top of the pole. In the new state ordinance, the height is limited to 10 foot above the tallest existing utility pole, within 300 feet of the co-location facility, or 45 feet above ground level. Now remember, that's the top of the pole. And then the state new law allows them to go 10 foot above that, as opposed to our seven. There were some slight changes on the size of the attendant and cabinets that are associated with the small technology. In that case, the city actually benefited, the state actually had it a little smaller. For the tenons, they limited to six cubic feet, we previously had limited to seven. And for the cabinet size, the state limited to 24 cubic feet, we originally had set 25. So those, they actually maybe benefited a little bit. We had a requirement that not more than one tenon could be per pole, and the tenants had to be at least 300 feet apart. The new state legislation, that's eliminated. Another requirement we had in our ordinance was that we prohibited new monopoles, which is a pole that would just have that wireless facility on it, no other utilities or lighting. In the new state act, those restrictions are eliminated. There was a change in fees. To give you an idea, previously, we wouldn't have charged for a license fee, we would have charged $75 for a right-of-way permit application. In the new state law, we're allowed to charge up to $650 for an application of a facility on a pole. If there's multiple facilities that they're applying for, we can charge up to 350 apiece, and that's for an existing pole. For a new pole that's proposing, we can charge up to $1,000 for that permit application fee. Now, remember, that's a one-time fee. One thing that is a big change from our existing, we didn't have any limits as far as annual reoccurring fee or a license agreement fee. One of the things we had been negotiating with one of the utilities, we're looking at $2,500 per month, per pole. Unfortunately, the new state law limits us to 200, so, kind of running a scenario, if we looked at tenon-tenon locations, here in Urbana, that would have netted us $30,000 a year in revenues, you know, for that particular license agreement. Under the new fee structure, you know, we dropped down to $2,000 per year, so about $28,000 drop in annual revenue than what we had anticipated we could previously negotiate. So that is a little bit of a loss for us. And then finally, another change, as one knows, the application process. Before, we handled it as a license agreement, there were really no set dates and timelines for it. As part of the new state mandated legislation, we have to review and determine that if their application is complete within 30 days of receipt of that application, and then we have up to 90 days to approve or deny it. If we don't respond within those 90 days, they get what they call a deemed approval, and can proceed with putting their facility up. For a new pole, it's a little longer period, that was for an existing pole, if they're going on existing city telephone, or, I'm sorry, city light pole, or traffic pole, that would apply. For a new pole that they're going to install, it would be 120 days. So, that's kind of the quick version of the changes. Like I said, I don't know if there's much debate we could do, we're required to adopt this, you know, prior to August 1st. Would that open up any questions?
Are there any questions for Brad Dennis Roberts?
Hey Brad, there's about three paragraphs on Exhibit A, page 18, that discuss the erection of the poles, if I'm reading this correctly, in historic properties and historic landmarks and historic districts. And it talks about concealment measures and discriminatory design or concealment measures. What does that tell us? What's going on there?
Well, my understanding of the legislation as it's written is, in historic districts and in other similar type of districts, you can make them, you know, put up a certain type of pole, or, you know, provide certain types of shrouding to hide the equipment that matched with the character of that neighborhood. The one thing you can't do is, those requirements can't be so strict or onerous that it prevents them from installing their technology. So you can make them factor in aesthetics and try to make it match or camouflage into the neighborhood, but you can't set those requirements to the point where they prevent them from being able to install the technology.
So you could ask them to paint the box?
Yep.
So that it's less obvious, it's not an eyesore?
Yeah, or if there was like a specific, you know, type of cabinet that you wanted, or color, or, you know, those would be, you know, a certain type of pole to match the existing, you know, light poles or street poles.
These are small boxes, but I know that our ordinance about historic districts or historic landmarks talks about not installing anything that would obstruct the view from the street. And yet, of course, I've seen that, or, that, that particular feature or principle sort of ignored, because then all of a sudden, you see like, you know, some, like, 10 by 12 electric box sitting on the corner right in front of the building. So we've not really prohibited visual obstructions from the street, but it's interesting to see that at least, apparently, it's written into the ordinance here, and that's what you're telling me.
Well, we actually have screening requirements in the existing for ground-mounted utility boxes for these. The ones that we've seen proposed by the one utility we've been dealing with, would actually be mounted on the pole. So it's actually kind of up in the air. There's a couple of reasons they do it, but-
But if we wanted to, we could say, you have to spray that green, or whatever, or dark blue, or-
Jim?
With some, shall we say, limitation. We can't make one company spray their utility pole-mounted support structures, or, you know, support facilities for the antenna, green, and not do the same for other types of companies. It has to be done in a non-discriminatory way. Two-part test, non-discriminatory, and it can't be, the requirement cannot be such that it would prevent the company from being able to install the small cell technology they'd like to install.
Sure, we don't want to prohibit them from doing it. I'm just trying to understand how we are honoring historic districts and historic landmarks, because there's three paragraphs here that talk about that.
The problem is with that, unfortunately, especially for us, is, we have no say-so. The state statute overrides this, because there is no, there is a home rule preemption that applies to throughout the entire legislation that was passed in April. So that's what governs.
So really, we can't ask them to paint anything green?
We can, as long as it doesn't, I mean, obviously, if we can ask them to paint something, that's not going to prevent them from installing. But whoever wants to install something, if somebody else installs something there, we have to apply the same metric to some other cell company or some other utility that installs something.
Sure, which we probably would want to do.
That's fine, then we can do it.
But if it's in front of a historic landmark, or a designated historic district, which we don't have very many of in this town, you know, but in front of the Royer home, that's a historic district, and we have a couple others. Okay.
Bill Brown?
It looks like there is still this appearance standard, says, unless otherwise prohibited by law, the city engineer may prohibit the installation of privately-owned or user facilities in particular locations in order to preserve visual quality. That's staying in there, it sounds like, and that was part of our ordinance.
Yeah, I think the intent of the legislation was, they're sensitive to that, you know, they want these to blend in or camouflage in with the surrounding environment as much as possible, as long as it doesn't prevent them from being able to install the technology at the location that they need. You know, and just in our dealings, like I said, with one utility company that's approached us about doing this, I mean, they've been very accommodating as far as, you know, one, you know, they'll do it any color that we want, and, you know, it'll be shrouded, so it is, you know, visual- So, it is, you know, visually screened up on the poles. So, you know, I think the companies, the utilities are sensitive, you know, to it sticking out like a sore thumb.
Mary Alice?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with approval to the council ordinance number two thousand eighteen zero seven zero four nine, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Twenty, Articles Two and Five.
Do I have a second?
I will do that. I second it.
That's a motion by Mary Alice and a second by Dennis Roberts. Is there any further discussion from council or the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Moving on to ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero seven zero dash zero five zero, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Fourteen, Section Fourteen dash seven regarding the scheduled fees. I guess we need to do that. Still writes Brad.
So, what this is, is just to revise the schedule of fees to add those new application fees as well as a recurring fee. Once again, it's required by the new regulation act.
And that was included in that packet?
Correct.
And a motion from Bill?
I move to send ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero five zero, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Fourteen, Section Fourteen seven regarding schedules of fees to city council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
That's a motion from Bill Brown and a second from Mary Alice Wu. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Thank you, Brad. All right, up next, we have resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero two nine R, a resolution authorizing entry into inter-local agreement for cooperative purchasing program with Region Eight Education Service Center, Pittsburgh, Texas, from finance Elizabeth Hannan.
So, this item would allow us to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to participate in a purchasing cooperative. This is allowed under Illinois law. We currently participate in four joint purchasing agreements, including the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Agreement. This particular item would let us participate in what's known as the TIPS Purchasing Co-op. This co-op does have pricing available through Enterprise Fleet Management, which we may choose to use for the vehicle leasing program that we discussed as part of the budget process. But once we're a participant, we could also make other purchases through this arrangement.
Any questions for Elizabeth?
I'd like to make a motion then.
All right, motion?
That we send to city council with recommendation of approval, resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh seven dash oh twenty-nine R, authorizing entry into an intergovernmental, inter-loan agreement, a cooperative purchasing program with Region Eight Education Service Center, Pittsburgh, Texas.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That's a motion by Dennis Roberts, second by Dean Hazen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. That goes forward to full council. Up next, we have resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero thirty R, resolution authorizing entry into purchasing alliance agreement with the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Company. Elizabeth, we need to know anything further about this one?
This is just another purchasing co-op similar to the previous one. And I was asked to add this to our, the co-ops that we're participating in, particularly because they have a current arrangement that looks good for us in terms of office furniture, and that would be done through a Champaign business that actually would do the installation. But again, we may make other purchases through this co-op if it's approved.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's a motion by Aaron, has a second?
Second.
Eric Jacobson has the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Up next, we have item twelve, resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero three one R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Back in the hot seat. How can we do those in omnibus? You have multiple resolutions affecting this.
Actually, this one is just a standalone one. It's the next three.
The next three after this?
That would be the omnibus, yes, so. So, before you use the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the housing authority, this is in relation to the Permanent Supportive Housing Development Grant that the Illinois Housing Development Authority released in April. And so, staff and the Cunningham Township supervisor met to discuss this grant opportunity. And then the housing authority was contracted and they agreed to partner with the city. So, staff searched for sites and the parties then negotiated on a possible site for possible option agreement for purchase if the housing authority has awarded the grant. So, the owner of the site submitted an application for a conditional use permit, and this will be heard at the Zoning Board of Appeals on July eighteenth. So, the housing authority presented the intergovernmental agreement to their board on June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, and it was approved with possible amendment from the city. And a draft of the intergovernmental agreement was submitted to the city after the Urbana Community Development Commission. So, the commission was unable to review and approve this memo and the agreement. So, the memo states on page two what the agreement identifies specific roles for the housing authority and the city. And then the options are to forward the resolution to the city council with a recommendation for approval or with suggested changes or not to recommend the approval. There is no fiscal impact to the city general fund. And it does address with the consolidated plan certain key strategies for the Community Development Law Grant and Home Investment Program stated in page three of the memo listing what those goals are. And so, staff recommends that the council approve this resolution. And John Daly with the housing authority is here also to answer any questions that you might have.
Bill Brown?
So, who would own this? Would the housing authority own the development?
The housing authority would own it.
And who would, so would the housing authority take out the mortgage?
I'm a little on the peripheral of this. David Northern had wished to be here this evening. He had a flight delay, so I got sent in his stead.
Lucky you.
I can answer most of the questions, but it's a little outside of my field. I believe that we would be the ones applying for the mortgage for the owner.
Okay.
Because at that point, there's no real partnership with the city.
I'm trying to figure out why the city is involved. What's our role?
You would have some funds, I believe.
Well, if needed, I think pretty much funding is going to be, I think it's because the project will be in Urbana, even though the city won't own it and is not a city-owned property because the project will be in Urbana. If at some point funds are needed, we do have funds. But I know according to the agreement that pretty much IDA funds, housing authority funds, and private funding.
Carol?
I just wanted to point out that in the draft intergovernmental agreement, that it says that the authority and the city will work together to secure all necessary city approvals and financing commitments to submit an application to IHDA under the, so under the program. So, the, I think it was anticipated that the city would, oh, and it goes on to say, "Under project financing." It is anticipated that the city will contribute direct or indirect secondary financing, including waiver of certain fees, permits, and costs. So, that's our involvement is reflected in the draft IGA.
Bill?
Okay, I'd also like to make an amendment that was suggested by the mayor to insert a number four in the intergovernmental agreement that says, "In the eventual operation and leasing of the new development at sixteen oh six East Colorado Avenue in Urbana, Housing Authority of Champaign County shall comply with Sections twelve thirty-seven and twelve sixty-four of the City of Urbana Human Rights Ordinance." And then renumber the existing section four to, that's a miscellaneous, to renumber that to section five.
Kelly?
I reached out to Cindy Herrera and David Northern regarding our human rights ordinance and making sure that it would be in line. And the response I got was that it's no problem on the city ordinance provided that they can still exclude registered sex offenders and methamphetamine crimes, which is federal regulations specifically precluding any housing assistance in those two areas. They said they will be drafting a separate moving-to-work activity for this project. So, they will specify the ordinance provisions in the description of the activity and have it approved by HUD as part of their two thousand nineteen moving-to-work plan approval process.
Is that a suggestion, Kelly, that we should not insert this language into the ordinance or the intergovernmental agreement as suggested?
It's okay to put it in there. I was just stating that. They said they didn't have any problem with the ordinance and that some of their, the two things they were stating was that because of federal regulations. So, if that doesn't affect the ordinance?
Just as a point of order, Bill, I think we're going to need a motion first before we offer the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Mary Alice?
I'm curious about our human rights ordinance. Does that specify that we can discriminate against sex offenders?
Carol?
The ordinance, as I understand it, because we've been having some internal conversations, allows for flexibility as it relates to felonies if the felony is related to, if, is related to a condition of whether it's the employment or the housing situation. So, this is a good example of the kind of flexibility that the ordinance allows, but it doesn't allow blanket discrimination against people, you know, who have been convicted of felony. So, this is exactly the kind of flexibility that's built in to the ordinance.
Eric?
So, I think it's a general rule, but Jim can say that federal law and regulations trump ordinances if they were in conflict, although that doesn't seem to be the case here.
When there are federal funds involved or federal programs, I would agree. If there's no federal funds or federal programs, then not necessarily so. And again, what constitutes federal funds opens up a whole Pandora's box.
Let's not go there. Further thoughts from the committee? All right, well, can I see a motion for this?
Was it item number twelve?
Resolution?
Yeah, I could do that.
Yeah, this is item number twelve.
Yeah, because I think this is basically a very important agreement. So, I'd like to support it. I'd like to send resolution two thousand eighteen oh seven zero three one R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority of Champaign County forward to the city council with approval.
I'll second that.
All right, that's a motion by Dennis Roberts and a second by Dean Hazen. And Bill, would you like to offer an amendment?
Yes, I'll offer the amendment that I stated before. Should I read it again?
Probably.
Okay.
Charlie would be happy.
To insert a section four that says, "In the eventual operation and leasing of the new development at sixteen oh six East Colorado Avenue in Urbana, Housing Authority of Champaign County shall comply with Sections twelve thirty-seven and twelve sixty-four of the City of Urbana Human Rights Ordinance." And then to renumber section four as section five.
All right, so... And there's a second by Mary Alice. All right, so we're going to have to vote on the amendment. And then if that passes, we will vote on the resolution. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. All right, vote on the resolution as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that resolution passes as amended. Well, it moves to the full council as amended. All right, the next three we're going to do, if it is the pleasure of the committee in omnibus fashion, it's resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero three two R, resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium. That is Habitat for July of two thousand eighteen. A resolution approving and, a resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero three three R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement for Habitat Developer PY twenty seventeen. And then resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven dash zero three four R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, also Habitat.
Chudo. Habitat Chudo.
Chudo. Kelly is also going to talk to us about this.
Yes, so before your three resolutions, one is to certify Habitat as a community housing development organization, or CHODO, to authorize a developer agreement to Habitat and then also to have an operating agreement with them for CHODO funds, operating funds. So, basically Habitat was first certified as a community housing development organization in two thousand eleven. They totally requested the amount of ninety-four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is the amount of funding available that is required set aside per the home regulations. And in page two of the memo, there is a breakdown listed of the funding and the two project addresses. The first one is eleven eighteen West Hill, and that is in Urbana and will begin in December of this year. Seven eleven Sherwood is in Champaign, is expected to be acquired in July of this year, and then they expect to begin work in August. Regarding the CHODO operating, the home consortium can allocate up to five percent of home funds for general operating assistance. At its June twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting the Urbana Community Development Commission unanimously agreed to forward two of the resolutions for approval. The third resolution was inadvertently left off of the agenda, and so they could not approve it and request it be forwarded to council. However, the item was discussed and positive comments were made.
Any discussion? Bill Brown?
I move we consider resolutions number twenty eighteen oh seven oh three two R, oh three three R, and oh three four R in omnibus fashion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor of considering them in omnibus fashion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, we'll consider it omnibus fashion. Is there a motion? Bill Brown?
I move to send those motions, those resolutions to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All right, that's a motion by Bill Brown, second by Mary Alice Wu. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, that goes forward to the full council. And with that, and no further business before this council, I will adjourn this meeting.